Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Votche, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Isart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney is not here. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche, so much. At this time, I'd like to take a point of privilege. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce a guest who's with us tonight, Mr. Stephen Clark. And we have many other gentlemen who have assisted him. And we thank you so much for coming tonight, Mr. Clark. Good evening.
What is this?
So first off, good evening. I want to first thank the school board for allowing us this opportunity, myself on behalf of all of the folks here, to be able to do this tonight. What an honor for me to come and do this. And so, my name is Stephen Clark. I'm humbly honored to have been appointed to serve as the superintendent of law enforcement at the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. I serve under the direction of Governor Jeff Landry and Secretary Madison Sheehan. A proud graduate of Chauvin High School, class of 1988, lived in St. Pernod Parish most of my life, currently reside in Hammond with my wife and two sons. After graduating from Chauvin High School, I attended Southeastern Louisiana University, and shortly after that began my career as a Louisiana game warden in 1994 with Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries where I proudly served until 2001. 2001, I was hired by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a special agent. During my time with the service, I was fortunate to serve in numerous duty stations across the country, including Louisiana, Mississippi, New Mexico, and my last duty station was Atlanta, Georgia. Served in multiple roles with the service, including senior management roles, and was also afforded the opportunity to train to fly airplanes and become a special agent pilot. My last position with Fish and Wildlife Service was Special Agent in Charge of the Southeast Region of the United States, where I oversaw law enforcement operations for 10 states, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands. In January of this year, I was appointed by Governor Landry to join Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. As a result of this appointment, I retired from the feds from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on January 7th, and started my career with, came back to Louisiana with the Department of Wildlife and Fisheries on January 8th. And I know it's a bit of a short retirement, and I'm often reminded of that by my wife almost on a daily basis. As superintendent of Wildlife and Fisheries Law Enforcement, I currently oversee approximately 220 game wardens across the great state of Louisiana. My career has been an absolute blessing and would not have been possible had it not been for the people I've been fortunate enough to be surrounded by. Several individuals have had a positive influence on my career and have had a positive impact on my life. This includes my family, which is ingrained in law enforcement right here in St. Pernod Parish. Here with me tonight are my two brothers, Colonel Chad Clark and Captain Brian Clark, both with the St. Pernod Sheriff's Office. I should mention that both Brian and Chad also graduated from Chauvin High School, Brian in 1983 and Chad in 1990. I'd also like to recognize Sheriff Jimmy Pullman, who is also here with us this evening. And also here with me tonight from Wildlife and Fisheries is one of our most trusted advisors, Lieutenant Colonel Eddie Skinner, who serves as my deputy chief. So let's get to why the St. Pernod School Board has allowed me a few moments tonight. When I took office, my brother Brian reached out to me and asked me if I had any knowledge on the previous colonels that had served the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. Of course, I knew all of the most recent colonels, but that's not what he was asking. He had learned of a previous Colonel who had served many years ago in the same position that I currently serve in. So I got to work, did my homework, and learned most all of my predecessors at the Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. Many have served in this role before me, but one, Colonel Paul Votche, served in the same role I currently serve in, and I've learned that we not only had, we not only had the same job, but also have some other connections. Superintendent of St. Pernod Parish Schools, Ms. Doris Votche, is the daughter of a late Colonel who served at Wildlife and Fisheries. Like most in this parish, I was blessed to have Ms. Votche as a math teacher at Chauvin High School, and she has certainly contributed to my successful career that most recently includes serving in the same role that her late father did from 1948 to 1952 under then-Governor Earl Long. Colonel Votche had an interesting history.
Just say the least.
I'll start with his military experience, and that really sticks out to me. He joined the U.S. Navy in 1917 at the age of 16 years old, and had overseas duty in World War I and was honorably discharged in 1919. Worked in different positions in and around the New Orleans area, and then in 1942, he was selected by Governor Long and employed by the Louisiana Department of Conservation at the time, now the Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. He was promoted to Ranger and then promoted to Director of Enforcement Division/Colonel, the same position that I sit in today, in the summer of 1948, where he served until October 1st, 1952. When Colonel Votche first took the Director of Enforcement position, he had this to say about the challenge of the job. Policing Louisiana for fish and game violators is a more difficult task than in most any other state in the Union due to the bayous, marshes, and isolated sections we must reach to apprehend violators, but we're getting them, and we'll get more of them as the weeks and months go by. It is too much to hope that we can rid the state of all violators, but we're gonna make it, we're gonna make it so tough we'll cut down the numbers considerably. Sportsmen can help a lot by reporting violations, and now that the hunting season is near, we hope for much assistance from the hunters themselves. If they would only realize that by ridding the country of the unlawful hunter and fisherman, their sport would be greater and more certain to last. As a Director of Enforcement, Colonel Votche oversaw the implementation of utilizing aircraft, radios, and even soliciting information from the public on fish and game violations, and possessed a conservation philosophy that we still utilize today. An example of this effort included using a Fish and Wildlife Service airplane, which I personally got to experience by flying for the Fish and Wildlife Service, and so we do use this same technique on a daily basis. An example, including using the plane to spot an illegal hunter and radio to state officers on the ground, and they had the guy arrested in less than 12 minutes. In 1950, all patrol vehicles, boats, planes were equipped with two-way radios, and Colonel Votche even had one in his office to communicate with his patrol officers in the field. I have a handheld radio in my office that sits behind me on my desk on a daily basis listening to the radio traffic. I say all of that to say, a lot of the things that he implemented and utilized as Colonel over the Enforcement Division, we're still utilizing today. So tonight, it's with great honor and humility, under the leadership of Governor Jeff Landry and Secretary Madison Sheehan, that I, along with the entire Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, and other law enforcement personnel here with me tonight, recognize and applaud Colonel Paul Votche's service to the state of Louisiana, the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, and to the sportsmen of Louisiana. And at this time, I would like to ask Superintendent Votche to come and accept this recognition on behalf of her late father, Colonel Paul Votche.
Yes, ma'am. And you, Brian. And Chad, all the Clark boys. Jimmy. Oh, there we go, these are my brothers. Come on up, y'all. This is beautiful. Thank you so much.
That's an honor.
Isn't it beautiful?
People looking at us.
Were you? I didn't even know y'all were here and you were looking at us.
Almost didn't make it.
You almost didn't make it. Why don't you have a seat, folks?
I'll show you later.
Oh, Lord. Guys, let me just go sit down a little bit. Y'all want to take a picture while you're all together? Yeah. My nephew John, my nephew Rod back here, my niece Sherry. I don't know if I can make it through this, but, you know, I was, I was on the phone with Brian one day, and we were talking about a little project in the eastern end of the parish, and I don't know how we got on the subject, but we were talking about how Stephen is the Director of Enforcement for the Wildlife and Fisheries. I said, you know, my dad was at too, at some point when I was a toddler, back in the late 40s and early 50s. And what I said to him, I said, you think you could ask your brother to go look in the archives for those old Louisiana conservationists, because my dad used to write articles within that? And he said, sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask him. So Steve, I still want you to go do that and take a look, because we lost all the ones that we had at that point. And, you know, this year, our school theme is unlocking potential, and we just had our big breakfast, and Jimmy, you were in the videos as well, and we talked about how education is the key to all of our children's future. And my parents, who were very, very bright individuals, my mother and my father, both, both very, very smart people, had absolutely no formal education. My mother was a child during the Depression, my father had very little formal education, but they worked very, very hard and made many sacrifices for us. And as we were growing up, it was just known in our home, the three of you, my brother Paul, my brother Tommy, the three of us, we are going to college, you're gonna get an education. There is no discussion about that. That's where we were, what we were led to do our entire lives. And it has opened up tremendous futures for us. And as we get toward, I guess, more to the end of the life cycle, as we're somewhat retired or getting close to that, you know, each of my brothers have raised four beautiful and wonderful kids, and they have impressed upon them the same things that our parents impressed upon us. So I am so thankful for what my father and my mother gave to us as kids, and you can tell from my voice how emotional I am, because I'm not usually like this, and the lessons that they taught us. But I think that's one of the reasons, you know, I became a teacher in my young life, because that's what I did with all the kids, you know? I was, I wanted to show everybody and help everybody and help them learn, because I knew how important that was. So I've spent over 50 years in this school district, working with the kids in St. Pernod Parish, and hopefully helping to provide great educational opportunities for them and life opportunities for them. And I'm just very thankful to the Clark brothers, you know, for making this presentation possible, and to let you know how much I truly, truly appreciate that. Because, you know, I mean, my happiest days was when I was in the classroom, and I had direct contact with all you guys, and we would be able to do things, and I felt I was making a real difference. And sometimes in this job, I do other kinds of things, so I don't get that direct contact anymore. So these are the kinds of, I guess, experiences and incidents that I feel like, well, maybe I did make a difference, you know? Maybe that I've made a contribution here that will leave a legacy, just as I feel my father and my mother created a legacy for us, and that we're living and breathing human beings, showing that particular legacy of learning. So, thank y'all, I appreciate it. I want to thank my family for being here, they didn't say anything about this to me. And I have many, many more, you know, nieces and nephews who are like my children, who are scattered throughout, not only, well, no more here in the metropolitan area, but throughout the state and in other states in the country. And they're all doing well, and I attribute that to the Votche clan, as we have pulled together. And if you really want some stories of what happened, you know, and not only was he the Director of Enforcement for the Wildlife and Fisheries under Earl Long, but he was one of Hugh Long's bodyguards and was involved in all of that as well, many, many years before. So thank you very much, I appreciate this. Thank you, guys, that's all I can say.
Okay, so on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank the Clark brothers and Sheriff Pullman for being with us, all of, all of the law enforcement officers to take time out to be here for you, Ms. Votche. You are special to many people, and it shows it tonight. And I know you're very special to your family also, she talks about y'all all the time. And so, thanks, thanks to the Votche family for coming tonight, we really, really appreciate it. And, you know, the old saying, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, your dad was just a hard worker, and, and I'm sure your mom was too, and they instilled values into you and the Votche family, and it shows. And he was superintendent of wildlife, and you're superintendent of education.
The superintendent of education, yeah.
So it's just, it's a wonderful thing.
Now, if the state would listen to me on education, we would be in a much better situation than we are now.
We all agree with you, Ms. Votche, we wish we, you could be there. And, but anyway, we're all very proud of you and your family, and we're very thankful for the presentation tonight, and we know how much this means to you and your family. So thank you very much, all of you, for coming, thank you very much. And if I could also say, we're proud of all our Chauvin High graduates also.
Yes.
Go Owls. Thank you again for coming tonight. Do you want to take any other pictures?
Can we take, yeah, can we just take?
We're gonna take a few-minute recess and then convene in just a few minutes, short recess. We are now back in the session, and we will move on to the next item, which is a presentation of communications update. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Ericout, good evening.
Good evening. It's a little bit of a tough act to follow, but I'm gonna try. All right. Good evening, everyone. I've got the communications update for the month of November in front of you. Inside of that packet, you will find all of our press releases throughout the month, and stats for Facebook and social media pages, and numbers for like how many visits we've gotten to our website in the last month. And at the back is a description of our super news, but we're not really doing super news this month, instead, we're going to feature an incredible video that was, was cut together by Chris Castillo and his film club, and it was showcased at the Owl Expo that just happened last night and today. So, without further ado, please enjoy this month's edition of super news, which is the Owl Expo promo video.
Oh, hey, everyone, I'm Norman, one of your co-hosts for today. We're just running on my other host, Esma, give me one second.
Oh, hey.
Hey, Esma, where are you?
I'm coming, at the park on the academy side.
I see, let's meet in the middle.
Hey, I'm Esma, and we're your hosts for today. Man, that was a long walk.
Yeah, our school is pretty huge, that's because we offer a lot of opportunities.
It's because we have so many owls.
Yeah, there are a lot of us here.
That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about opportunities, specifically opportunities that lead to success.
Ah, I get it, you mean like our athletics or wrestling?
And soccer, of course. Let's turn it over to Cooper, our favorite sports broadcaster, for the rest.
Thanks, Esma and Norman, I might add, baseball is pretty awesome, right, Tatiana?
And softball, what do you think, Macy?
Nah, basketball, where's that?
I'm Cooper Martin-Nemera, senior pitcher on the baseball team, and also the sports broadcaster on Owl Watch News. Being a part of the baseball team isn't just about playing baseball, it's also about helping the community as well. We hold youth camps multiple times a year to help grow the love for the sport with kids in the area. Over the past four years, I've got to experience things from pep rallies to athletic events, all of which are some of my favorite parts of high school. The athletics also get to experience the state-of-the-art facilities, such as this baseball field, the football field, both with LED lights that can flicker whenever we do something good. They also have the Olympic-sized swimming pool and an indoor hitting facility for the softball and baseball teams.
I did hear Tatiana say something about the hitting facilities, isn't she on the team?
Why don't we hear from her now?
I'm Tatiana, I play right field for the Chauvin High softball team. As a three-year member, I can say that this team has not only sharpened my skills in communication and teamwork, but I've also grown as a person, especially in a leadership aspect. The softball program here at Chauvin High isn't just a group of girls, it's a family. And by working together, we have achieved many of our goals, such as being eight-time consecutive district champs.
Winning isn't the only thing the athletic department cares about, from the friendships and character building you'll experience over the four years, it truly has shaped me into the person I am today. It's not always easy, but it sure is worth it. As you can see, Chauvin offers opportunities for kids to play pretty much whatever sport you want, from football to tennis to swimming, we pretty much have it all. Back to you, Esma and Norman.
Thanks, Cooper, I really enjoy my time on the soccer team, especially those team dinners, but you know, I only got to play because of my academics.
What do you mean?
What do you mean, what do I mean? And well, in order to play sports, you have to maintain a certain GPA. I did that while challenging myself with some pretty rigorous courses.
Yeah, I've been in some of those classes with you, they were pretty difficult, but we still had fun.
We did.
Here to tell us more about the academic options, especially as a freshman, is Kimberly.
Thanks, Esma and Norman, I'm Kimberly King-Tania. One of the choices you get as a freshman is to take engineering, and when I took engineering my freshman year, we got to make a lot of cool projects on the AutoCAD system, there was a lot of hands-on learning, and it was really fun. Another one of your options freshman year is PE or ROTC. Here's Sebastian to tell us more.
My name is Sebastian Gibson, I am the Cadet Colonel of JROTC. ROTC is a program to develop citizens of character. A part of our education foundation of the ROTC program is aerospace, so we have our educational days where we open our books and go through study guides, and also a part of those educational days, sometimes we will go through programs, helping to know how to navigate through college per se, how to apply for scholarships, what scholarships mean what. And also, there is further involvement per se within the program, so if you don't want to just be at the surface of the program, you can also choose to be within uniforms, and also be in after-school activities, and be a part of the community, so color guard events, be able to march in our Veterans Day parade, and also many other parades, be a part of Mardi Gras balls. We also offer drone-flying programs, along with RC aircraft, and also we have an archery team that is being made, so we even go into competitions. It's, offers so much more to be involved within the program and have so much fun, and offer that life-changing experience.
Whoa, I didn't know all that about ROTC, did you?
Archery? Not at all, what else can you tell us, Kimberly?
Hmm, let's see, what else can we choose as a freshman? Oh, yeah, that's right, academic dual enrollment credit options like U.S. government. There are just so many academic dual enrollment opportunities, you can finish your first year of college without stepping foot off campus. We have over 36 hours of dual enrollment credit, and that doesn't even include all of our AP offerings. Here's Sebastian and Macy to tell us more about associate degrees.
I'm currently pursuing an associate's degree within the subject of aerospace manufacturing technology, and it's gonna help shape my future for the career path I want to go to, so I want to get a bachelor's, so I'm already knocking out my associate's degree in the process, so I have less years in college, it's definitely a worthwhile thing to involve yourself within.
I'm Macy Robinson, I'm the starting shooting guard for the girls' basketball team at Chauvin High School. I'm duly enrolled at Nunez Community College, I'm going there to get my associate's degree, so I'll graduate with a high school diploma and an associate's degree in May of 2025. At first, I did it because I heard like, you know, the schedules that they get are pretty cool, but now, you know, as I'm a senior, I'm realizing it adds a lot of cushioning for your college applications and scholarships, and it gives you really something, something to talk about. And a lot of people don't get to say that they graduated with both a high school and college degree. Being that I play sports, I want to go into broadcasting, like Maria Taylor, she was an Olympian, and she played college sports, and now she talks on NBC Sports now, and I feel like that's really cool, and that's something I could see myself doing.
Thanks, Sebastian and Macy. We also offer many CTE courses here, and here's Olivia to tell us more.
CTE is Career Technical Education, like medical classes. My name's Olivia Bergeron, I have earned my certification in CPR, and I'm also a certified nursing assistant. We offer dual enrollment classes, not only on Chauvin's campus, but also on Nunez's campus as well, so you get to leave the school, go be on a college campus, experience those classes, experience college, before you even get into college. So with these medical classes, you go to Nunez to do class, and in the second semester, or at the second half of the semester, you go to clinicals. So with CNA, you go to a nursing home, and you actually get to do hands-on work with patients, and you get to take care of them, and just do everything they need you to do. And with phlebotomy, you'll also go into a hospital, and you'll be doing, you'll be drawing blood on real people and real patients. But that's not all that dual enrollment offers, they also offer welding, electrical, HVAC, instrumentation, and many more. If you are really interested in this, I encourage you to look into these CTE and dual enrollment offerings, they're very hands-on, and they help you experience the things that you want to do when you get out of high school.
Thanks, Olivia, we also have Pro Start, those students always go to nationals for their savvy business plans and culinary creations. We also have computer science and media arts, where we can create animations and video game designs. We also have horticulture, where we can learn to grow our own food, and TV productions, where we can make cool videos like these. There are just so many electives to choose from here at Chauvin High. Back to you, Esma and Norman.
Making videos like this is pretty fun.
True, do you remember the Halloween one that Cooper and the TV crew did?
Who could forget? Okay, we got sports, academics, what's next?
Not all sports, what about cheerleading?
Oh, yeah, that's right, let's hear from our cheer captain, Alexa.
My name's Alexis Sullivan, I am the captain of the Chauvin High cheer team, I've been on the cheer team since freshman year. Cheerleading has given me many opportunities, such as being the emcee for the pep rally. It was a really fun experience seeing my class yell back at me while I was talking to them, I got to see lots of the school interact with each other, and it was a very fun experience. During cheer, we have lots of different teams, we go to Dallas every year for competition, and we do very well every, every year, because we work hard, we practice a lot. Cheerleading has given me a lot of new friendships and opportunities, I feel like as the cheer captain and being a cheerleader, I'm constantly involved with other students, and that has helped me grow new friendships.
Thanks, Alexa. Now, we also have some of our performing groups and clubs to highlight. It looks like Olivia's back in the tech theater, all changed up. Let's hear from our charmer captain.
I've been on the team for four years since my freshman year. We do camps in the summer, and that helps us kind of kick off the year and get our sisterhood going, and it's probably one of my favorite things also. We also do parades, we do state and national competitions, we do Christmas shows, it's a lot of hard work, but in the end, it is worth it. game designs. We also have horticulture, where we can learn to grow our own food, and TV productions, where we can make cool videos like these. There are just so many electives to choose from here at Chalmette High. Back to you, Esma and Norman.
Making videos like this is pretty fun.
True. Do you remember the Halloween one that Cooper and the TV crew did?
Who could forget? Okay, we got sports, academics. What's next?
Not all sports. What about cheerleading?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Let's hear from our cheer captain, Alexa.
My name's Alexa Sullivan. I am the captain of the Chalmette High Cheer Team. I've been on the cheer team since freshman year. Cheerleading has given me many opportunities, such as being the emcee for the pep rally. It was a really fun experience seeing my class yell back at me while I was talking to them. I got to see lots of the school interact with each other, and it was a very fun experience. During cheer, we have lots of different teams. We go to Dallas every year for competition, and we do very well every year because we work hard, we practice a lot. Cheerleading has given me a lot of new friendships and opportunities. I feel like as the cheer captain and being a cheerleader, I'm constantly involved with other students, and that has helped me grow new friendships.
Thanks, Alexa. Now, we also have some of our performing groups and clubs to highlight. It looks like Olivia's back in the tech theater, all changed up. Let's hear from our charmer captain.
I've been on the team for four years since my freshman year. We do camps in the summer, and that helps us kind of kick off the year and get our sisterhood going, and it's probably one of my favorite things also. We also do parades. We do state and national competitions. We do Christmas shows. It's a lot of hard work, but in the end, it is worth it. We come together as a team.
Hearing Olivia talk reminds me of the Warren Stewart section on a Friday night with the band playing the right music to pump up the team and the crowd. Let's head to Maddie in the band room.
Hi, my name is Madeline Pereira, and I am the drum captain in the Chalmette High Fighting Owl Band. What that means for me is I'm kind of like a mentor for everyone in percussion. This is my fourth and final year in band, and I'm just, I feel so lucky to have been a part of this. It's a surreal feeling, and I just, I don't, I don't think I could get it from anywhere else.
Norman, 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 stop dancing. Maybe you should have been a charmer.
Maybe I should have. I do like to perform. Don't forget, I made my live debut this school year.
Oh, yeah, that's right. What were you, light pole number two?
No, I was not light pole number two. I was Henry in Frankenstein. Here's Ada to tell Esma and a little bit more about our awesome Performing Arts Program.
Hi, I'm Zaylee Wolf. I'm a junior here at Chalmette High, and I'm a proud CHS Voices member and CHS Live member. CHS Live is our fall show, and in the fall, we do a straight play. So, there's no music involved. It's kind of just like a drama or a comedy. But in CHS Voices, it's kind of like all of the different things. We act, we dance, we sing. And in the spring, we put on our very well-known musicals. We pick a new musical each year, and we do a bunch of different acting, singing, dancing. It's a very versatile program. During the summer, it is called our Performing Arts Academy. It's a very multi-generational program, so anywhere from, you know, first grade onto our alumni. We even take some of our Chalmette High teachers and staff, and they come and perform in our shows with us as well. Being a part of this program, I think, is such a special thing. People don't realize that it's not only performing on stage. It's so much more than that. It's a family that we've created. It's a community that we've created, and it's just such a loving space. And for me, it's important to be doing something that I love doing with my life every single day. And then on top of that, creating just such a beautiful community to be here with in Chalmette. And I wouldn't want to be doing anything else.
Okay, okay. So, you were more than a light pole. I get it. Pretty cool. Aren't you also like 4H president or something?
I'm also Southeast Region Representative. Let's take a quick look at some of our clubs. Let's hear from Denim Bell and revisit some of our other friends that are also involved in clubs.
We really do have the best clubs. I like to work behind the scenes with the tech crew, which allows me to be a part of the productions of a lot of activities, such as the school plays. I'm also a member of Student Council, which is a student-led organization that fosters a sense of community and school spirit. One of the things we do in Student Council is host the blood drive, which helps save lives to those in need of blood. Being a part of these clubs have allowed me to develop my collaboration and problem-solving skills with others. Tech allows me to dive into my passion for cinematography, as I'm able to film the school plays and also football games. I work together with a close group of people, allowing me to be a part of a community that I've always hoped for.
I'm also a part of many different organizations here at Chalmette High, such as ambassadors. We're the face of the school, and we attend many different events here. I'm a part of 4H. We go around the community, and we plant trees, and we do a lot of stuff for the environment. Beta, we hold a lot of community-wide fundraisers, such as our annual car wash. The reason why I take advantage of all these opportunities that Chalmette High has to offer is because it's going to help me in my future. It's going to build my college resume and get me to where I want to be.
So, I started playing academic games in third grade. And academic games is just a series of five games that we play, including presidents, propaganda, equations, and onset. And we actually got second place overall in team sweepstakes in the nation this year, and I'm really, really proud of all of us.
CHS has such a family and welcoming environment. It allowed me to be an owl, a strong owl, and I can't wait to spread my wings further.
And with that, remember, the choices you make today will lead to opportunities tomorrow.
And good Owls always. Get it.
So well said from the students who participated in all the extracurricular activities and the academics. I mean, it was just very well done. So, congratulations on that wonderful video, and, you know, the students were amazing.
They are. I believe also that they are, they have creative control over that. They do the scripting. I think they plan the shots with Mr. Castillo. And so, like, they planned that entire video. I think it's incredible what they put together. Beautiful showing of what they have at Chalmette High.
Excellent. So, well, thank you so much. And does anyone else have anything to add to that, Mr. Warner?
I just want to know, is there a downloadable version of that on YouTube, or is it on our website?
I'm sure that there's, I'm sure that it's available on YouTube, and I can put it on our website. It's brand new, so I'm going to put it on. I'll put it up at the top, and then we'll have links, and I'll share it on Facebook also.
Fantastic.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Great idea, Mr. Warner.
Yes, it is.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you too, Ms. Feld, for all that you do, Jack in the Back, and also Barry with the tech crew and the filming crew. We appreciate all of you. Thank you all very much.
And if I could just add, the TV production teacher at Chalmette High School, Mr. Castillo, has done an incredible job with these kids. Because like Ms. Feld said, it is all student-driven in terms of writing the script, actually filming it, performing in it, and setting up the different scenes and the types of things that we're going to do. So, I mean, for high school students, I think it was extremely well done, and it was all produced in-house by our students with our own equipment and with their own talents. So, congratulations to them and to their teacher, Mr. Castillo.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Feld. Okay, next item on the agenda. Is an approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting of November 12, 2024 into the November 19, 2024 regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of September 24, 2024, as published on November 15, 2024. Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of October 22, 2024, as published on November 15, 2024. Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Creason, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the special meeting alternate placement appeal minutes of October 22, 2024, as published on November 15, 2024. There's a motion. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, second. Second by Ms. Rodney. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item, personnel changes for November 2024. And in your packet, you have a list, and those changes since the committee meetings should be highlighted. Are there any questions at this time? We have, do you have one retirement that is newly listed? Alveria Hill. We want to thank Ms. Hill for her many years of service to the students of St. Pinoide Parish, and we want to wish her a very happy retirement. And thank you so much again for your service. Anyone else? Okay. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is an adoption of the 2025-26 school calendar, and it was recommended by the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next is an approval of the Numeracy Professional Learning. This was recommended by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. White. Second by Ms. Creason. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the 2023-2024 Annual Financial and Compliance Audit. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Lemoine. Second by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an approval of the 2024-2025 Revised General Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budgets. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an adoption of a revision of School Board Policy, BCBB. And there was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, second. By Ms. Creason. Okay, Mr. Morales is with us tonight. If there's any questions, or I know you presented them at the committee meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any changes?
No, ma'am.
No changes in the presentation at the committee meeting, correct? Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay. Please cast your votes.
11. Motion passes 11-0.
Next is an adoption of School Board Policy, BCBJ. And there was a recommendation from the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Rodriguez. Second by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is an adoption of the Revision of School Board Policy, CBD. And there was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Rodney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. White. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next is an adoption of the Revision of School Board Policy, GAK. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Lemoine. Second by Ms. Creason. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next is an adoption of School Board Policy, GAMK. And there was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Ms. Creason. Second by Ms. White. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Next item is an adoption or revision of School Board Policy, GBC. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Warner. Second by Ms. Creason. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, next is an adoption of the Revision of School Board Policy, IDBA. There was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Campbell. Seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Next item on the agenda is an adoption of the Revision of School Board Policy, JGC. There was a recommendation by the committee. And just for the public's information, we discussed all these at the committee meeting, and all of these are based on the legislation of the legislature and state law. Mr.?
I think we skipped one.
Okay.
IDDF.
IDDF, okay. Okay, we'll go back to that one, but right now, we're on JGC. Okay?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. White. Seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, thank you. Next is an adoption of the Revision of School Board Policy, IDBA. And on your agenda item, that's 5.11, there was a recommendation by the committee.
IDDF.
I'm sorry. IDBA, right?
IDDF.
Five point, oh, I missed. Okay, I checked that one off. I'm sorry. Okay. The adoption of Revision of School Board Policy, IDDF. There was a recommendation by the committee. Okay, motion by Ms. Lemoine. Seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any discussion? Okay, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Thank you, Mr. Morales. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Those letters can jumble down. Okay, next item on the agenda is a strategy session and/or action concerning pending litigation in the matter of PA et al versus Votchay et al. Civic Civil Action Number 223 CV 0228, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Louisiana. Is there a motion to go in executive session to discuss this litigation?
So moved.
Mr. Long makes a motion to go in executive session, and Ms. Lemoine seconds it. Any discussion? Please cast your votes on executive session.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. The board will now go into executive session. Okay, is there a motion to go in open session? There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion to go in open session and a second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. We are now in open session. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Ms. Lemoine.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Isar. I'd like to make a motion that the board accept the recommendation made by council on executive session in the matter of PA et al versus Votchay et al. Civil Action Number 2:23 CV 02228, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Louisiana.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Lemoine. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Long. Okay. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mr. Campbell. Ms. Harris. Or Ms. Creason. Or Ms. Lee Bowman. Or Mr. Long.
Four.
Ms. Lemoine.
Four.
Ms. Isar.
Against.
Ms. Rodney.
Four.
Four.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Four.
Mr. Warner.
Four.
And Ms. White. Four. Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Again, our thanks to you and Mr. Sipolone and Mr. Stewart and Mr. Rivera. Okay. Next item on the agenda, our items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Anyone at this time? Okay, and you always have until the committee meeting to add any items to the agenda. All right, superintendent's notes, Ms. Votche.
Okay, we had a wonderful, I think Ms. Feld had mentioned it in the communications section at the beginning, the Chalmette High Expo last night, extremely well-attended, and I think people were very impressed. We saw a video earlier in the evening. And we also today had all of the eighth graders from all of our feeder schools, all of the eighth graders from all of our feeder schools did visit Chalmette High School, and again, got a chance to answer additional, ask additional questions and see some of the many programs offered at the high school. The Christmas show, Chalmette High's Christmas show, is December 12, 13, and 14. It's a wonderful event. Tickets are on sale. You go online, you'll be, it'll be a wonderful night to enjoy music from our students. The, our Lions Club, we have a School Board Employees Lions Club, and as one of the fundraisers this year, we're having a Nutcracker Tea, which will be, don't laugh over there. Look at him laugh. Nutcracker Tea, which will be December 8, Sunday, December 8, at the MoMA Center. We have two seedings, one at 10 and one at 2. It's a wonderful, if you've ever been to like a Teddy Bear Tea downtown, our version, we're going to have a Nutcracker Tea. It's going to be a wonderful event. Ms. Carolla is in charge of that, and we're all helping her to make it just wonderful. The tickets are on sale now. You can come and purchase them at the school board office, and you can see it online. So if you want to take your very young children to the Nutcracker Tea, it'll be a great experience on Sunday, December 8. And next month, our meeting will have both our committee meeting and the regular board meeting on the same day, December 10. There'll be my evaluation at the 5 o'clock meeting, followed at 6 by our committee meetings, and then followed by the regular board meeting on Tuesday, December 10. Mr. Warner, I think you had an announcement to make as well.